Selectmen's meeting to water Wednesday, October 5th, 2022 at 6:30. Our meeting is being in is in the Great Hall. So tonight, do we have anything for non-public?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We do have two items under employment, and I would just like to note that select person Linda Murray is attending virtually.
I was going to mention that. Okay, consideration of minutes, August 3rd. Anybody have any questions?
I believe that I could be wrong, but I think that the August 3rd and the August 17 minutes were already approved, weren't they?
I think that.
I could be wrong.
I think that they were tabled.
Were they tabled?
Yes.
Hey, I have it in the minutes, the minutes that we have right here of the 17th says consideration of minutes of August 3rd, and there was a motion.
Okay.
And I believe the 17th, I have some draft, September 7th minute, and that's when we approved the August 17th.
So the 17th and the 3rd?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're both both been accepted.
Okay, moving on. We have first, public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 5th, 2022, approximately 6:30 PM in the Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for consideration of a temporary event permit for the NIC to host a triathlon on July 29th, 2023, at Alvey Beach, Route 28, Route 109, Trotting Track Road, and Percy Drive. Somebody here to discuss that?
Good evening. Vince Vaccaro from Tri-Tech Events. This would be the second year for the event. We've learned a bit from the first year. I've been speaking with the chief of police as well as the fire and rescue chief for ways to improve for 2023. One of our top things that we'll do is begin approximately 60 minutes earlier to lessen the impact on local traffic.
Anybody have any questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Do you want to close the public hearing?
It just notes, it notes in here that the chief made a note, need to hire five police officers in detail, and then it also notes that issuing a certificate of insurance two weeks prior, state permit, insurance certificate, and securing the five Wolfboro police officers detailed no later than two weeks prior to the event as conditions of potential approval.
Making that part of the motion?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, another public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, at approximately 6:30 PM at the Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, consideration of temporary event permit for the Governor Wentworth Art Council to host a fall art display at the Wolfboro Public Library from October 15th to 31st of 2022. Anybody here to speak to that?
Hi, Jerome Holden, Governor Wentworth Arts Council. It's just a paint a leaf event. We have 20 some odd leaves cut out, and we're inviting the public to paint them and display them at the at the libraries in the towns that were in our area, and the Governor Wentworth Arts Council.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak for or against? Close the public hearing? Who would?
Move to issue a temporary event permit for the Governor Wentworth Art Council to host a fall art display at the Wolfboro Public Library from October 15th through 31st, 2022, permit number 2022-71.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next we have another public hearing. This has to do with unanticipated funds. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022, approximately 6:30, for acceptance of unanticipated funds valued at less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A. Wolfboro Fire Rescue Squad valued a, let's see, donation from the Wolfboro Single Tracks Alliance, a rescue litter to the Wolfboro Fire Rescue Department valued at $5,252.57. Somebody here want to speak to that?
Nate Nichols, Deputy Chief. When we were evaluating our capabilities to perform rescues out on the, not just mountain bike trails, but out in the wilderness in general, we have a lot of old equipment, heavy equipment, that is very manpower extensive. This new equipment that the Single Track Alliance donated to us is going to make those rescues a lot more efficient, and it's a great piece of equipment. We've been messing around with it in the in the bays, and it's greatly appreciated. So, thank you, guys. Any questions about what exactly it is?
Yeah, I have a question. From what I could gather from the pictures, I'm assuming this is a one-wheeled piece of equipment?
It is. It's a titanium litter that is set on top of essentially a fat bike, mountain bike tire that is also controlled by a handbrake. It's got a rotor on it, so it takes all the weight, which just allows two people essentially to effect a rescue if we had to.
That's what it looked like to me, so. All right, anybody else want to speak in favor or against? Not to close the public hearing? Who would?
I'll make a motion to accept the unanticipated funds valued at less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A, to accept a donation from Wolfboro Single Track Alliance of a rescue litter to the Wolfboro Fire Rescue Department valued at $5,252.57.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on our agenda is our bulk vote. This includes weekly manifests, intent to cut, property tax abatements, summary of the MS-1, which is valuation, the MS-1V, which is Lowell Beach Pond summary inventory valuation report, and raffle permits. I think that's it, A through F.
I'll make a motion to approve the bulk vote, items A through F.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No appointments, new business. Public thank you of the dock attendance program update. I'm going to read this on behalf of the board. On behalf of the town of Wolfboro, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen would like to thank the talented group of employees who participated in the town's pilot program for summer dock attendance. The town is aware that the Wolfboro Bay docks have been very busy during the summer season, with hardly any empty dock slips available, and boats regularly circling the bay to wait for spots. This program has greatly reduced the number of boats circling the bay by assisting boaters with docking to maximize the use of spaces. On behalf of the board and the town of Wolfboro, we acknowledge how lucky we are and appreciate the staff who worked extra hours this summer to make this program successful. Jim Apponis, Bruce Barnelli, Scott Vaccaro, Steve Page, Jeremy Malo, Steve McMartin, Lance Goethe, and Joey Allen. These are our town employees. We saw down there on Saturdays and Sundays, and I personally, and I think the others, had a chance to get out and see what they were doing. I think it was a great service, and we're certainly going to budget it again for this coming season. Anybody else have a remark? Thank you.
I, you know, as I said before, you know, it's, it was great working alongside them. It's a pleasure. We have extremely talented people that work for the town departments here in Wolfboro, and it gives the people coming to Wolfboro a great avenue to ask questions and be interactive with some of our town staff, and they do a great job, and they did a great job this summer, and I think it offers a lot of value to that area, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think I saw you down there a couple times with a shirt on.
Few. They wanted me down there more, but I tried to get down as much as I could.
Okay, thank you, guys, for taking care of that. We hope to see you there next year. Okay, approval, 2022 trial period of Wolfboro Single Track Alliance.
So Chris Dow is here to give an update on what has transpired since we last met. He's got a brief PowerPoint presentation. I did provide you with a copy of some of the items we identified as a town for the Single Track Alliance to try and complete going forward so that we could have a, as safe a possible bike trails in conjunction with some cleanup and some erosion management. And I think Chris will go over these issues, and if you have any questions toward the end, I'm sure he'll be able to answer them for you. Chris?
Yep, great. So yeah, Chris Dow, President of the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance. Thanks for having us in again tonight to give an update. We know that this was something that we all wanted to try to see how it went, and I think now that we've kind of been through the busy summer season, you know, this is a great time to update, but I think also right now is when a lot of people like to get out on the trails too, when it's colder and you're not sweating as soon as you start moving, so. So looking forward to a great fall as well, and continuing the conversation. So, you know, as far as, so what we're going to do here is, and I'll try to keep it brief, you know, give an overview of kind of where we are, an overall update, and just kind of an update on the trial period itself for what the town was requesting. So for those who aren't here, we are an organization that's dedicated to building and maintaining bike trails in Wolfboro, with also the kind of the inclusion of these trails being multi-use, so people that are out walking dogs or snowshoeing, I mean, that's also inclusive, but this was started by a bunch of guys that really liked to ride bikes. Here's the board, for those who aren't aware, and for the overall update. So one of the things I wanted to point out is the collaboration that we've been doing with other organizations in town, and just in general beyond what the town has asked for this trial period. One of those is with the Conservation Commission. So these trails are over near the Fernald Station off of the rail trail. We have been working on a sign, which, you know, I know we've heard here a few times, the pace of this stuff sometimes takes a while, so it's been a few months into working, but we're pretty much at the point where we've got the approved verbiage, we've got a key and a layout, and I think the key with this was to establish a convention for mapping, and I think that this is something, Brian, you've talked about in previous meetings. So now that we have this sign pretty much dialed in where we want it to be, we're going to update it, and then we're going to take this convention and also use it for, over at the Abenaki area as well. So this is, one thing that I would like to request is a good version of the town logo, so I could include that when we print the map, and I can follow up on that with you, Jim, or somebody else. And then also, as part of this, in addition to what we were going to do for Abenaki, we are creating signs, and I've been talking to people about getting that done, so that will be done soon. One thing I wanted to share in here too was, you know, through this whole year so far, we have been working with lots of different organizations, and I wanted to throw in a few quotes from people in the different groups we're working with. So one here from the Conservation Commission is that, the Conservation Commission has found the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance to be an invaluable partner in the development and maintenance of recreational trail systems in Wolfboro. These trails provide significant public benefit by providing a means for citizens to get outside and explore nature, whether it's on foot or on wheels. Outdoor activity promotes healthier minds and bodies, and is the first step in cultivating an ethic of caring for our natural resources by creating a connection with our environment. We look forward to our continued partnership with the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance. You know, I thought that was really nice to hear from the Conservation Commission. We've also got one from the Outing Club, right, the provided by Nate, who's also sitting here in the audience, which is great. The greatest feature of the trails that Wolfboro Single Track Alliance has developed is the fact that they are multi-use and multi-seasonal. While the biking is certainly fantastic, I really enjoy walking and running the trails in all seasons. It's been exciting to see the trail usage numbers continue to climb, and I'm really looking forward to what the future trail development looks like. So I think this is one of those things too that really points to the conversations we've had so far about these being multi-use trails. And I frequently, you know, as just kind of a personal aside, come across people walking their dogs over at Fernald, or people just hiking or trail running, like, you know, Chief Zadi, who's out there all the time running. You know, it's been evident, and more than just me talking about it, I see it when I'm out there every time, so. If I'm going to be able to get to the, oh, there we are. Yeah, so the Wolfboro Cross Country Ski Association as well has a quote here that they've built a good relationship with the Wolfboro Single Track Alliance over the past few years, and have been collaborative when it comes to trail construction and maintenance. And overall, the addition of single-track trails, many of which can be used as snowshoe trails in the winter, adds to the value of the trail network. So again, just kind of showing collaboration between the different groups. I threw in one slide for you, Brian. You know, it's not always sunshine and roses here, so we do get requests for the ability to, you know, maintain the trails, or look at, or have the open communication for things if if things are needing to be addressed, and, you know, these are the types of requests that we do respond to as well. So it's, you know, it's not like I get quotes all day in my inbox from people saying how great we are, but, you know, we do work together to make sure that these relationships are strong. So, you know, as is evident with the quote, you know, we do get requests and take care of them, and still maintain that good relationship. We did, you guys approved the Summer Race Series a few sessions ago, and, you know, here's a handful of pictures from that. There was a lot of different abilities of riders, and, you know, as far as, you know, little boys and girls, all the way up to, you know, people in their probably 50s or 60s riding their bikes out there doing the race that the Summer Race Series put on. That was an awesome event at Abenaki, and, you know, a couple of quotes from that, you know, "This is great. We never knew Wolfboro had such great trails." And once we found out these trails were in Wolfboro, we started coming up from Portsmouth a few times a year, you know, just as I was there for that event, and talking to people about how they thought about it, they were all very impressed with Abenaki specifically, because that's where the race was. One thing that I'm trying to work on too, and I just figured I'd put a slide here, is trail usage, because I know that that's a question probably that's going to be coming up around overall maintenance and the value of the trails. You know, although anecdotally, I can say that we see people out there all the time, we can also see things like this with, you know, this is a heat map of just my individual usage of one specific area of town, which is over at Fernald, just because I thought the map looked cool, but, you know, there's people out there every single day, you know, in the middle of July at 7:00 in the morning. On a Saturday, I've gone out with six guys and come across, you know, four people in one part of the trail, another six people in another part of the trail, you know, that's at 7:00 o'clock in the morning, so I'm sure all day we're seeing a lot of stuff. Also, to talk to the earlier part of the meeting, so that's the rescue litter that we were able to provide to the Wolfboro Fire Rescue. I put details in here because I wasn't sure if you guys needed to have that broken down or not, but I think this is, again, another show of how collaborative we've been, where Chief Zadi reached out and said, hey, you know, we're wondering if you would be willing to help us, help to look at some equipment or things like that, and I think that day or within the next couple of days, it was purchased, and it's on its way, and we wanted to fund it, because, you know, this is important, right? Because if somebody does find themselves in the woods and needs help, whether it's on the trail or anywhere in Wolfboro, that this piece of equipment could be useful, we just wanted to be helpful there. So just wanted to throw that in as well, as far as an update. So as far as the actual work that we talked about earlier this year, we did break down kind of what happened. So the climb line, which is now officially called tossing cookies, we were proposing to spend another $13,000 to complete that, which you can see at the top there, and the flow trail as well, there was another $11,000 to kind of clean up, put in the erosion netting, and take care of all of the things that were called out. So we had that all done in July, and, you know, the estimate of the work that we had was 24,000. It actually came in at 23,126, so that was pretty good. And as far as the actual components here of the things that we needed to address in that last meeting that I, the last presentation we gave, the slope and soil stabilization, that was addressed. The signage, that is targeting hopefully very soon. We have all the mockups, which should be provided, and then it's just a matter of getting them produced and installed, so I would assume within the next couple of weeks, right? So that'll be all done. And then the debris cleanup was addressed, and, you know, the hours of operation, we always had agreed upon that, and had no issues. I took a picture here, you know, one of the areas, I think this was where it was called out, showing that we wanted to have that erosion netting and grass seed put in, you know, so we did clean up the trails, put in those types of things in the different areas. And before the folks that we had building the trails left town, we made sure that Dave Ford had gone out and walked around and approved everything, because I know there was conversation around some of the spray field stuff and the different components. So I was on the phone with, in speakerphone at one point when we talked through a bunch of stuff, and then before he left, they actually walked it, and they said that they were all good, so. Okay, yeah, and here, yeah, here's an example of what the signage is going to look like. I actually went around and took a bunch of pictures of the existing signage that's out there, that's been there for, looks like, many years. So what we're going to do is do aluminum signage, so it's going to be very weather-resistant, highly legible, and calling out specific areas where I think we mentioned in a previous meeting about wanting to have call-out for downhill traffic only, or kind of cautionary signs, so those will be very bright, and hopefully in workout. And the kiosk signage is, like I said earlier, we're, once we've now kind of finished that with the Conservation Commission, we're going to dial that in for Abenaki. And I think the last thing on here was the snowmaking pipe. So I walked over there with Chief Zadi on August 19th, and then followed up with Jim after the fact. You know, I think we have the ability to cross it, and I think in the future, if that becomes more of a usable avenue, we figured it might make sense to bring in some more fill and make that more substantial, but as it stands now, it's safe for passage, and people can get over it, and there's no longer kind of a threat. And, you know, again, the goal was not to have that trail end where it ends and come down this anyways, but I think for accessibility's sake, having the passage for now is fine, and I'm happy to, you know, we're happy to help coordinate putting more dirt there, but as the email says, it's fine for now. So I think that is it, yes. Does anybody have any specific questions on anything?
I have a couple. Jim, number one, who is going to be responsible to make sure that maintenance and all these issues are covered going forward? Is that going to be your responsibility? Is it going to be Chief Zadi's responsibility? Or how are we going to know when we ask for something to occur, and then it occurs?
Well, if I remember correctly, Brian, before we even get to that point, this has got to go to the voters next year for approval. If this gets approved by the voters, what I would envision happening is, you know, Parks and Rec most likely would take a scheduled tour of the facility to ensure that it is safe for cycling, but those are details which are yet to be worked out, but I'm pretty sure that we can work it through with the Single Track Alliance.
Okay. Yeah, because the only issue I have is like, we, in our licensing agreement, the licensing agreement said that we were going to address everything, and I think, if I'm correct, that it spelled out that you would check to make sure everything was approved and whatnot. One of the parts of the licensing agreement was that signage would be installed before the trails were used.
I don't.
That's in the licensing agreement. It is.
Before use?
Yeah. That those, the 10, the 10 different items that were in the licensing agreement had to all be completed before the trail started using. So we used the trails this summer without some of the things being accomplished. You kind of worked on it as we went. I guess that's okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, the trail work was done before they were open. The signage, I would say, if that's the case, yeah, I apologize, but that's, that's the only thing that was not completed.
Yeah, and the, and the covering of the pipe, I think that should have been done a little bit more suitable before we had people riding there.
Well, that's not a bike trail. That's just a secondary access, and it was completed before the trail was open, and Chief Zadi said it was fine.
And other than that, when is, when are the trails going to be shut down for the season?
I believe it's laid out in the license agreement. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's laid out.
I think we have hours of operation, but I don't know if they actually close. I mean, I would anticipate when snow starts flying, then people aren't going to be riding. Again, I mean, if there's language or things you suggest, if we need to put on signage of after a specific date, people can't.
Is there, is there a time when you don't want people on the trails anymore? Will they?
We'll post them, like, I mean, in the spring, that's a very specific time when there's a lot of moisture in the dirt, they'll wreck it. I mean, in the fall, you don't really have that issue. But yeah, I mean, if there's, again, if there's recommendations from the, from the board as far as closures or anything per the town, we will look at the trails as far as, if somebody's going to ride them and mess them up, that's when we'll close them. That's mostly in the spring.
Can you, can you take a look at this one for me? That was from, go ahead, you can go back to the mic. That was from Jim, and those were the areas that he pointed out when we did the walk, and all those areas have been corrected.
Yeah, this was, so when we did the, got the estimate for the trail work, it was all per the things that were called out, and then these were all of the items that, when the trail builder left, had walked with Dave Ford and addressed, made sure everything was addressed, so.
All right.
If I may, just to answer your question, Brian. Under paragraph 2, terms of the agreement, June 16th, 2022, through November 30th, 2022, so that's when the.
November 30th. That's what I thought. I didn't know if it was the beginning of November or the end of November. I have part of the license agreement here, but I, but I didn't print it all out. What's your plan to keep people off the trails after November 30th?
Pretty much at any of the different areas, we put up signage or things that aren't going to catch somebody off, you know, like you wouldn't want to put an invisible line across a trail.
No.
And we can't stop people from going around trails, but I mean, a lot of times, we have trail closed signs, and we're very conscious of where we put those, at the trailheads and in different areas. That's typically what we do, is just put up trail clothes, and we'll post on social media and put on the website if certain things are closed.
Okay. The only other thing I have to say is, I know that you were talking about bridges and other structures on the property, and there is some documentation that we found that said that because they were financial grants given to the land, that building of structures may be an issue. It's something that we're going to have to look at going forward.
Sure. Yeah, no, I mean, again, this is, I think, per the trial period, we wanted to try to get everything taken care of, and for future work, we're very happy to collaborate.
Okay. Jim, would it be advantageous that for next year, depending on what happens with the vote that we have, or even if the vote does pass, that we have an annual licensing agreement with the Single Track Alliance? I think it would be good, so everybody knows that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly can ink that. I guess the question is, you know, do you want to make that something that's renewed annually? Do you want it every two years?
want to make that something that's renewed annually? Do you want it every two years? What's, what's the longevity of it? And I think that's something that the board and the Single Track Alliance can probably come to consensus on, and we can make that happen.
Yeah, because they're going to have more construction and stuff that you're going to do next year. And it's always good to have something in writing, this is what we're going to do this year. This is where we are and so on and so on.
Yeah. I mean, per the term of the license agreement, I can probably tell you now, even without sitting down for the planning, a multi-year deal is usually what we've done with the Conservation Commission and Lakes Region Conservation Trust, because the intention is to be good partners. And if we're going to invest a ton of time and energy, we don't, it kind of makes sense.
Yep.
You know, that said, anything, if there is, you know, updates that you want to see periodically throughout the year, that we're fine doing that. You know, I think we've been very clear about wanting this to be a partnership and that if we're putting something in, it makes sense for the community. And we're not just kind of going rogue out in the woods.
Okay.
So Brian, anybody else have any questions for Chris? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is institutional exempt property policy and procedures assessing.
So last week, if you recall, we had, or the last meeting, we had Todd Hayward, our contracted assessor, come in and talk to us about some recent changes in institutional and exempt properties. He has put together a draft policy for the Board of Selectmen to review and take under consideration. I don't believe Todd is here this evening to speak on his behalf, but this pretty much takes what has, he feels is applicable to this and inked it as a policy. Now, I will be upfront, I have not sent this to legal yet for review. Wanted to bring this to the board first and get some feedback from the board before we send it off to legal.
Does anybody have anything they want to add or whatever? I think it just should go to Town Council.
I agree.
Then we bring it back to us.
We will.
Okay, next is release of funds for the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum.
So Mr. Sims is here this evening to talk on behalf of the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum. One of the items which we agreed to was an escrow account in lieu of a performance bond for the construction, which would bring us up through a certain phase of the project. We've, we've hit that phase. We, we've made that benchmark based on the agreement. And now we basically have the ability to release those funds to the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum withholding a certain percentage until the certificate of occupancy is issued. Mr. Sims?
I think that you expressed it very clearly and thoroughly. So if there are any questions relating to this, the, the Elchip decreed the rehabilitation phase, which is the phase that was governed by the construction contract. They declared it complete when you signed the stewardship agreement, which was late February. And we received the final check, which I suppose is really the sign of the end of that phase in early March. And so it's now six months since then. And the 17,000 of the escrow, we're requesting that you issue that check.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for John? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's just a housekeeping issue, really.
What we agreed on at the beginning.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Somebody want to make a motion to release the funds?
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. We will get that taken care of next week, Mr. Sims. We'll get that taken care of next week.
Okay, next on our agenda is a request for use of the Great Hall for a political campaign forum. Somebody here to speak to that?
Hi, I'm Edie Damaris, and I am here to speak for this. In the past, the Chamber of Commerce has held forums where the candidates have met and the people in the community have been able to come in and to listen to how various candidates would, would respond to their concerns and also what, the ways that they would vote. And, and it gave an opportunity for the people to get a feel of who the candidates are and to decide who they align with and who they would prefer to vote for. And I think it's also a whole, a very healthy opportunity for the candidates themselves to be able to, to sort out how they feel about the different issues and be able to articulate them to the, to our people who are voters. And this year, the chamber is not doing that. And we feel it's an extremely important service to our community for our citizens and voters to have the opportunity to express their concerns to candidates and to have the candidates share with them how they would address those concerns. So Randy Walker, who normally moderates these forums, has agreed to do it. And we feel strongly that this is something that the town should support and allow us to use the facility.
Okay. Any questions for Edie?
Just for clarification, all candidates from all parties, from all offices will be invited to attend.
Absolutely. Absolutely, yes. This is always, it has always been all of them who want to. Occasionally, somebody won't want to, but that's that candidate's prerogative. But it, I think the ones that I participated in, we were all here.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. Give everybody an opportunity to meet everybody and hear them and listen to them. So.
I think the, I'm in favor. I think the only thing going forward, it would be nice to, in the future, is to have a nonprofit, whoever it is, sponsor it.
It would be great. I mean, unfortunately, we just found this out really late. And so there hasn't been time. And we don't have a League of Women Voters or our AAUW or the different groups that traditionally do this. As I said, the chamber has done it. And I think everybody kind of assumed it would happen again.
Okay, I also see that you want to waive all the fees for the use of this hall.
That would be nice.
Okay. Somebody wants to incorporate that into a motion, Brian?
Yeah. I'd like to move to a, to approve a political forum for all candidates at the Wolfboro Great Hall. What's your date?
I had it here.
Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and to waive the customary fee for the Great Hall use.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
And before I sit down, can I just do a quick comment on the bike trails? I, my husband and I walk those. We do it in the middle of the day when the younger people who are now biking are on, are working. So they are beautiful and they're a true asset for our community. And as a former off-road biker for many years, I am bummed that it took us so long to start doing this because we rode snowmobile trails and the rocks, the roots, it was fine. But you talked about closing them for the winter. And we had a lot of years when we used to do a lot of off-road biking when there was no snow in January and February. It hurts more when you fall at that time of the year, but we were doing it. And these trails, if we have no snow, I don't see why someone who wants to, to do it shouldn't be able to use them. But that's just an opinion.
You could address that through the Parks and Rec Department.
Okay.
Because they will be responsible ultimately.
Thank you. I noticed they didn't ask for that, but I think it would be a shame not to be able to use them when we can't do anything on the snow because there's no snow. Thank you.
Okay. Reallocation of ARPA funds, Public Works.
Yeah, so I just would like to go over this really quickly. As these projects are unfolding and that the Board of Selectmen authorized ARPA funds for usage on, we've run into some adjustments that need to be made. The intent going forward, Finance Director, myself, and Steve Randall, Director of Public Works, will be coming to a final accounting of these funds and hopefully have them locked down for no more shifting of monies for better terms. So a couple of items that we've identified, we need to increase funds in the amount of $10,368 for electrical control panels associated with one of our projects. We need to reduce a line by 24,600 for a highway truck because we were able to secure a good price on the vehicle. And then we need to increase the roadwork at Pleasant Valley, Upper Trask Road by $51,346.16. What we're running into is, as we're getting ready to pave, the escalation costs are impactful. But I think that if you've had the opportunity to go out Pleasant Valley Road, I think the Highway Department has done an outstanding job in making these repairs in conjunction with some of our private contractors. And while the whole road won't be completed, I think it's going to be a substantial improvement from that meeting that we had here in July, when there was a number of citizens who were upset about the road condition. So to that, kudos to the Highway Department, Mr. Ford, and now Steve Randall for being able to accomplish some of this. I'll try to answer any questions that you may have specifically. Unfortunately, Steve can't be here tonight in case he's on vacation. And they have more of the particulars on it than I, based on last week's events. Yeah, I have one question, Jim. On the Pleasant Valley Road project down there, we received, and I don't know, not a bonus, but an extra grant from the, for the road, for the roadwork and stuff in town here. And now a lot of that was allocated for down there. So in addition to that money, we still need the extra $51,000 to cover those costs.
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, how far will this take us as far as Pleasant Valley Road?
So I, I can't recall the sections that are broke down. Linda actually may be able to speak to it better where she travels it every day. I did go down it a couple of weeks ago when they, when they were getting ready to grind. Linda?
They started off at Crossroads and goes down to the new bridge. Then they're doing a section the other side of the bridge, just about up to New Garden Road. Then they start again just about at, if you know, Danny Morgan's house goes down to the Point Fries. And then they're going and do a section down to Point of Pines.
Okay.
And they're doing a great job. And my understanding is that they are going to maybe pave on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. Any other questions about that? Okay, thank you. We need a motion to change that?
Yes, if this motion should be here for you.
I can make it. Move to reallocate some of the ARPA funds received by changing authorization to spend by adding $10,368 to line 0149722-202 cap control panels, reducing by $24,600 in line 0149722-404 highway trucks, and increasing by $51,346.16 in line 01-49722-205 roadwork, Pleasant Valley Road, Upper Trask Roads.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is other business.
Mr. Chairman, before we get into that, I see that there are a couple more employees here from the Public Works Department who were instrumental in the docks program. They missed the original thank you. But I think on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, thank you very much. And we'll be getting you some information going forward. But thank you so much for the program. And it was wonderful.
I think they wanted to speak and they wanted to say something. I don't know.
Say something to it.
Yeah, make sure you don't get rid of your shirts for next summer.
I got them on. I'd like to thank all you guys for making this program possible. You were saying there's a lot of boats that come in this year.
Excuse me. Did you just state your name for the record?
Bruce Marinell from the hardworking Wolfboro Highway Department with these guys too. And, oh, before I go on, we are doing a great job down in Pleasant Valley and we are working overtime down there. That's why we still have our workload. But anyway, you say there's a lot of boats that can come in. Believe me, there's a lot of boaters out there that aren't boaters. So we're not only helping people tie their boats up and getting them in, you know, we're saving our docks. I used to go down there and fix the docks every Monday and Tuesday. And we don't have to do that anymore. So it, it does work out and benefit, you know, to everybody. It was, it was a pleasure to work with Luke all the time. He was always down there helping us. I'd like to thank Linda Murray. She's down there all the time. At first, she was down there checking, make sure we're working. But after a while, she figured out, we were walking almost five miles a day doing these docks. And it was a lot of work. And Amy from the Town Hall, she was great too. We had a lot of nice people down there. They all know us by name now. It, they were a pleasure. They said it was a pleasure coming into Wolfboro because we were there to help them, you know? And there were some people with disabilities. And that was the, one of the best things that we did is help these people come into Wolfboro with disabilities. I had to help people with wheelchairs and other things. And that was probably the best part about the summer. And believe me, we worked all week in the hot sun. And we were down there. These guys were down here Saturdays and Sundays in the hot sun. So I thank, you know, all these guys. I mean, you might have something to say too, but, but it was a great thing. And we had to prove ourselves down there because, you know, the town people, what are you guys doing down there? We're tying up boats. Oh, really? So we, we did have to prove ourselves that it was, it was a real job. They said, you get paid for this? I says, I've never done nothing for nothing in my life. So, you know, it was a tough thing at, at first. But believe me, we did prove ourselves. It was a lot of work, a lot of hard work. There's a guy down there named Hot Dog Bob. And he has a group of guys that come down every Saturday and Sunday. And these are town guys. And they wanted to know what we're doing down there. I wish you'd go down there and talk to them now and they'll all agree that we really worked hard tying up boats. That guy, Hot Dog Bob, gave us hot dogs. Go to my cooler anytime you want, grab a drink. We convinced them that we are hard workers in the town of Wolfboro. Wow, I could say more, but you can try to.
All right, Jim Moponis. And I'm just here with Bruce and Joey and just to give you guys some feedback as the, as how the program went. And whoever came down and witnessed it, I know Jim was down there one day and he actually called me over for an incident that happened. And it was a good thing we were there because you have disabled boats and we're there to help and assist. We witnessed accidents and was able to report those. And like Bruce says, we helped, you know, protect the docks a little bit. It's, some boaters come in there, they really don't know what they're doing. And they're just new and inexperienced. But I, like, so many people came in and said they heard that we were there. And then they're like, this is the reason we came in, because we heard there was somebody there to assist us. So it was just really a great program. Everybody really appreciated it. And I can't tell you how many people thanked us. There were some, of course, that were all set, didn't need assistance, and that's fine. But 90% of them needed some help. So we need some work to do going forward to maybe change the program a little bit, maybe get a little more help, and just develop it. But for the first year, it was great. And everybody really enjoyed it. But for the first year, it was great. And everybody really enjoyed it. And it is a lot of work. I mean, if you're dedicated, you're down there, you're, you know, you really might take a quick break, but you're running because it's busy. So, and, and you do, you get them in and out quick. If there's spots up front that people can't see when they're out there and you call them in. Some people want to come in if, but they know where they're to assist them, they'll come in. A lot of times, we turn boats around so they can shoot right out, make it easier and safer for everybody. So it's a great thing. I think Luke, he was there a lot also. I can definitely agree with that. But thank you, guys, because I wanted to happen without all of you letting us get it going. So it was a big sacrifice on us too. I mean, but we wanted to get it up and going. So, and there's a guy here, I don't think he missed a weekend all summer. So tried to tell him to take a break, but he didn't.
Well, I witnessed it as well on quite a few occasions. So, and also, as I mentioned earlier, which I didn't show you this, but there's the budget for this coming year for that particular program. So it's going to be hopefully funded. And we've got it all programmed out to be in, as part of the budget for next year. So thank you for that. And we have taken notice, Jim.
You don't realize how many thanks you've got from the people. I do want to thank one other. I forgot that Dave Ford, he takes care of those docks. Will he be on the 4th of July and any other time? You know, we have problems down there with things we got to pick up from geese and seagulls and ducks. I mean, he's on our case, the highway guys. Make sure it's clean down there. You know, make sure the docks are clean, that the sidewalks are clean. He really takes pride in downtown at the docks. But the worst thing down there is ice cream.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, so, well, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there any other business? Committee reports. Linda, you want to go first?
I was on vacation.
Oh, good for you. Brad?
Yes, I had Planning Board meeting last night. I think that was all I had since our last meeting.
Okay, I had Conservation Commission meetings. I had a very short meeting with the Friends of Abenaki because we happened to have a meeting that night as well with the, all the committees that came in. Luke?
I had a very short, three-hour zoning board meeting Monday night.
We had, I had an EDC and a CIP. And the EDC is going to be doing something interesting. I hope I'm not trumping them. But we are going to be having an event at the, at the Great Hall here for a season closeout for all the businesses in town. So the businesses are going to be all invited to come here and discuss what the business environment was in the town this summer and how they could all assist each other and what the town can do for them and they can do for the town. So it's going to be kind of a nice evening event if anybody wants to join us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be determined.
You'll let us know, right?
Yeah, I think, I think it's November 11th, I think.
That's a holiday. Tom manages reports.
A couple of items. First of all, I'm kind of surprised that Brian didn't bring this up. So we've been approached, as some of you may be aware, Carpenter School has got a real problem with their playground. A lot of the equipment out there is unsafe for the children to use. And the school, school has approached us from a community perspective to see if the town would be willing to assist in the demolition of, demolition and removal of some of the aged equipment which needs to be removed in pretty short order. I had a conversation as a result of this, which I received yesterday, with Director of Public Works, Steve Randall. He had a conversation with his staff. They figured the best thing that the town probably could do to assist this group out was to provide a roll-off dumpster for them to be able to dispose of the equipment in a quick and timely manner and simply have it trucked off. The cost for that dumpster is $700. Just bringing it in front of the board for consideration. Again, if this happens, it's going to happen this weekend most likely with the dumpster arriving. But it's, it's something that I wanted to bring in front of the board because we were asked if it was something that the town would be willing to assist. And I know Brian's got some history with this. He approached me about it earlier in the spring, wanting to know if there was anything the town could do to help with getting upgraded playground equipment. So we've been approached. I'm bringing it to the Board of Selectmen for consideration. Brian, if you've got anything else you would like to add?
The only other possibility would be, because I talked to them at the transfer station too, if, when they demo it, if they separate the trucks material and the pressure-treated, all the wood product into one pile, any plastics into another pile, and any metals into another pile, it can be brought by whoever's demoing it with trucks and it can be dumped. And all we would have to do is just waive the cost of dumping the demo material there. It might be less expensive for the town.
Or we put a dumpster there and they just put everything in it, correct?
That, those are essentially the two options. I hadn't heard that one. Steve Randall was recommending this morning that the dumpster would probably be the most cost-effective way going forward. But it's your discretion.
I, I would think we could use the Selectmen's miscellaneous line item. I'm sure we have more than $700 in that. And I would think it would be quicker for those volunteers to just be dumping it into a dumpster.
Right.
And I think, Dave, didn't you help when we did the initial community playground?
Did I?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. That was a long time ago. But.
Just yesterday.
Yeah. Seems like it.
Same with the Children's Center, one too.
Correct.
But anyway, somebody want to make a motion about the putting a dumpster there?
They'll make a motion that we supply a dumpster to be placed at the playground behind Carpenter School for the group there to dismantle and, and get rid of the parts of the existing playground that they want to.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Couple of other items. Last night, I attended Planning Board meeting regarding the lighting at Abenaki. We gave a brief presentation on the project. It was approved by the Planning Board for endorsement. And the work actually has started. Interestingly enough, with the work that's going on, it's probably kind of a good thing that it's occurred. The vendor who is working on the installation of the new utility poles has found a couple of utility poles that are used for the rope tow, which have not been buried to an appropriate depth and have, are significantly loose in the earth. So they are actually repairing that while they're there under this single mobilization. So safety issue averted going forward, hopefully making that a safe avenue going forward. And those lights will be operational for this winter. Other than that, budgets, getting the budgets buttoned up. Right now, I've got a lot of work left to do. But overall, the overall budget between all funds is up just a little bit over 5%. That's the good news. The bad news is, the general fund budget right now is up just under 10%. So I've got some cuts to make if I'm going to hit my goal of 7.5%. And it's going to be a real challenge to do that. I just want to be upfront about that right now. Short of that, we've got nothing else to report.
Dave, I got one last thing. So, so the date on the, they're calling it the 2022, the EDC is calling it the 2022 Season Recap for Businesses. It's Thursday, November 10th, 2022, from 5:00 till 7:00. It will be complimentary wine, beer, and hearty hors d'oeuvres. So that's what we'll be looking at. Linda and I will be walking downtown and we will be supplying invitations to all the businesses.
The 10th, you said?
Yes, November 10th.
The time again?
Seven, 5:00 till 7:00.
I assume there'll be something in the newspaper and stuff as well. Okay, anything else?
Dave?
Yes?
Does Jim know when we're going to get our budget books? Since next Tuesday, we have a planned budget meeting.
Yep. So Casey and I are actually working on the budgets on Sunday to get the final items put together. So I'm hopeful that we will have some budgets for Parks and Rec printed off for you on Sunday afternoon. I'm meeting with Christine tomorrow to do her final review of her budgets. And then the final book will probably come out to you on Tuesday night. And we'll just have to inject those Parks and Rec pages. We've, we've fallen behind a little bit.
Thank you.
Just to remind Linda that you're bringing supper Tuesday?
I am.
Okay.
I will bring it.
All right, any questions from the press?
I just want to say that I was around too when that community playground was built. And it was, it was quite a project. They had an architect. There was a competition for which plan they liked. And there was a lot of support from businesses and huge number of volunteer hours. And I'm sad that it's, it's finally finished. But I, I hope we'll see something take its place. Thank you.
Okay. Public input, limited to three minutes?
Hello, Bobby Bedman. I'm on Pleasant Valley Road. I just wanted to quickly say that.
You state your name.
Sorry, Bobby Bedman.
Thank you.
And I'm out on Pleasant Valley Road, down Pleasant Valley Road. I just wanted to make a quick few comments. One, the work being done on Pleasant Valley Road is absolutely fabulous. It is so nice to see the work being done. And the, the workers out there are so pleasant, so kind. And it's, it's just really been wonderful. I also want to say, Alyssa, totally agree that it's hard to see that playground go. But I think our community will step up and do the right thing for the kids. And the third thing is, I have a request for the board, if the board can reach out to the Winnipesaukee Republicans, maybe through Brody Duches or John McDonald or one of the other Republicans, to let them know about the 25th. And that it will be moderated by our town moderator, Randy Walker. And then if you also can reach out to the Wolfboro, Tufton Borough Democrats and let them know of the town opening up the facility for a candidate forum, that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion, Linda, non-public?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you.